Bring this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Looking for an adoption of the agenda. Adopted by Counselor Cutler. Question?
Sorry, who?
Cutler. Counselor Cutler.
Moved by Counselor Cutler that the agenda be accepted as presented.
Looking for an adoption of the regular meeting minutes from April 25th. Oh, all in favor, thank you. Passed. Looking for adoption of the regular meeting minutes from April 25th.
I'll make a motion to adopt the regular meeting minutes from April 25th.
Moved by Counselor Zimmer that the regular meeting minutes of April 25th, 2022, be accepted as presented.
All in favor? Passed. Moving on to action items. Bylaw number 1738, land use bylaw amendment, first reading, Abe.
This is a land use bylaw amendment, first reading, on the agenda tonight. And this is regarding the alley closure on the east of the hospital. If we recall, we have previously had a road closure bylaw, an approval of that, and a public hearing on that. That road closure bylaw needs to be approved by the minister prior to second and third readings. And in order for this whole process to be complete, we need a land use bylaw amendment whereby this alley goes from no designation to designated as public lands. And so this is first reading for that bylaw. After first reading, we'll have a notice of a public hearing for the bylaw. But for tonight, it's first reading.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? Looking for a motion for the first reading? Motion by Counselor Carlson. Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to give bylaw number 1738, a land use bylaw amendment, first reading.
Any further thoughts or discussions? All in favor? Passed. Moving on, bylaw 1739, 2022 property tax rate bylaw. Abe?
So on the agenda tonight, bylaw 1739 for second and third reading, the 2022 property tax rate bylaw, council approved, first reading at the last meeting, April 25th. And at the time, we reviewed some details about the proposed bylaw. Overall municipal tax revenues were set to increase approximately 2%. Residential, 0.88%, and the non-residential, 1.09%. And the overall tax rate with the provincial requisitions was going to go up to proposed 4.92% non-residential increase and 2.44% residential increase overall. And so if you recall, we were waiting on the MD's bylaw and their rates because we have some annexed lands that have a guarantee of the MD rates. And so the MD has passed their tax rate bylaw, and so we now have their rates, which do affect ours very, very slightly. But essentially, the seniors' housing requisition and the education tax, those rates went down, which caused an increase in hours. And their residential, their MD municipal rates, they went up. And so hours go down correspondingly. Again, the changes are very slight, but what we're looking for is an amendment to the tax rate bylaw accordingly, and then second and third readings. And we have in your package the proposed changes to the general municipal residential and vacant residential and farmland, change being to .006974. General municipal non-residential and linear and designated industrial properties to .0117152. And the Alberta School Fund residential and vacant residential and farmland to .002564. And the Education Fund, non-residential and linear designated industrial to .0041994. And then finally, the Porcupine Hills Lodge to .0002623.
Open it for discussion. Comments on this?
I'd be willing to move the amendment prior to second and third, then we can get the other conversations going.
So moved by Counselor Kettles. Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles that bylaw number 1739 be amended prior to second reading to amend tax rates as follows. General municipal residential and vacant residential and farmland to .0069784. General municipal non-residential and linear and designated industrial properties to .0117152. ASFF residential and vacant residential and farmland to .0025640. ASFF non-residential and linear and designated industrial properties to .0041994. Porcupine Hills Lodge rate to .0002623.
Questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor? Passed. Any opposed? We are now looking for a motion for second reading. Motion by Counselor Cutler for second reading. Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler that bylaw number 1739, a bylaw to authorize the rates of taxation to be levied against accessible property within the town of Clarestown for the 2022 taxation year, receive second reading.
Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor? Against? Opposed? To oppose? And looking for a third and final reading. Got the motion?
I'll make the motion for the third reading.
Motion by Counselor Meister. Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister that bylaw number 1739, a bylaw to authorize the rates of taxation to be levied against accessible property within the town of Clarestown for the 2022 taxation year, receive third and final reading.
Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor? Opposed? To oppose? Motion passed. Moving on, number three correspondence, Mayor Andrew Prokrop from the town of Tabor. Abe?
Yes, correspondence from the town of Tabor just regarding increasing utility costs. We've seen a few of these correspondence items on our agendas. Council did not send to the Alberta Utilities Commission, but has sent similar correspondence to... It is slipping my mind at the moment.
Consumer advocacy?
I'm the advocate.
Thank you. Consumer's advocate. Utility consumers advocate.
Take this for information if everyone's in agreeance. Move on. Correspondents, town of Tabor. Who?
Yeah, invitation for registrations for the Alberta-Japan Twin Municipalities Conference. We are not twinned with a community in Japan, but several communities down here in the south are. And it looks like they're having a conference for that.
Questions, thoughts, comments? Take it for information if everyone's in agreeance. Move on to correspondence, Alberta Seniors and Housing, Seniors Week 2022. Abe?
Yeah, this is an invitation to celebrate Alberta Senior Week and with a declaration. Seniors Week is June 6th to 12th. Issued from the Minister of Seniors and Housing, and just encouraging all municipalities and First Nations communities and MAT settlements to declare Seniors Week. But this council has a policy whereby they don't declare any events or causes. It's been the practice in the past.
Do we have a set policy in place for this?
We do not.
Is that something council would be interested in looking at to see, to email back? Or do we want these brought forward to us for all of the weeks of the year?
Well, they're going to send them to us anyway.
Yeah, just as a formal response back if we had something that they would be? Or I'm not sure if that's something that happens?
To have a policy in place?
Yeah, where you can just automatically send back a reading, like, "Thank you, but no thanks."
But it's not within our policy.
Yeah, not within our policy? Or is this something we can just continue on with?
I think if you are looking to distinguish between what kinds of causes that you would proclaim and you wouldn't, then you might need a policy. Otherwise, you can just let us know. If you want us to respond to an interested group, we can draft a letter and just let them know, "Thanks." But as per practice, rather than standard policy, but council's practice is not to declare.
I don't know, I don't think it's necessary. So we can take it for information if everyone's in agreeance at this time? Moving on, correspondence, National Police Federation. Abe?
Yeah, as you know, the National Police Federation has been working with Alberta communities regarding the provincial, the provinces' plans and conversations around a provincial police force. And so the National Police Federation did a kind of province-wide consultation where they contacted a lot of people throughout the province through virtual open houses and different ways of connecting with people, surveys. And so this is a result of that engagement process. There's a report on here, essentially summarizing how Albertans feel according to their research. I'll just summarize a little bit of it here. The main findings are the majority of Albertans told them that they did not want expensive police transition to replace the RCMP with a new provincial police service. And people who... The respondents also felt like the government of Alberta should make priority investments aimed at improving the justice system, strengthening social services, and increasing police resources. And participants in the engagement process felt they had not been consulted by the government and that targeted investments would bring better and more immediate results to addressing crime in their communities. And there is a report attached to this as well for more information.
Thoughts, comments? Counselor Kettles?
I think they've put together a pretty thorough report. They've had extensive consultation. They talked to lots of stakeholders. I can't imagine how this kind of report could be ignored, though I fear it will be.
I fear you're right, actually.
Any other comments in regards to this?
Well, I have to say, this is probably a more even report than the one that the APP transition study, because they didn't consult the public at all. The public was not welcoming their discussions, period.
They did a really good job with this report. If there's nothing else, we'll take this for information at this time. Moving on, request for decision, letter of support from the Clarestown Golf Club. Abe?
Yeah, the golf club is looking to apply to the Community Facility Enhancement Program to work on the irrigation system. They're looking to upgrade the irrigation system that was, I think, original to the original nine holes. And they're looking for a letter of support. The golf club has been very active in pursuing grants for different projects out there, and we definitely applaud their efforts. And just looking for a motion from council to approve that letter of support.
Counselor Kettles?
Sitting in on a few of those conversations, this last golf course council, membership, has become very focused on the irrigation. I mean, that original line is exactly, you know, it's 40 years old. The new greens supervisor, I mean, was very careful in turning up the pressure kind of thing because it really seems to be held together with by intertwined. So they're very focused at trying to raise money, save money, pocket away money for what they know is going to be, not a cheap, but a pretty necessary change in their irrigation. So I'd be pleased to make this motion.
Moved by Counselor Kettles. Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to write a letter of support towards the Bridges at Clarestown Golf Club's application to the Community Facility Enhancement Grant for the purpose of replacement of the irrigation system on the original nine holes of the golf course.
Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor? Passed. Moving on, request for decision, 2022 Fair Days road closures. Abe?
The Fair Days Committee had had a meeting recently to discuss planning for Fair Days. And they had a recommendation come out of that meeting, a few recommendations actually, just regarding road closures and just traffic control for Fair Days. There were three things they were hoping council would do, which was, one, to extend the street market and parking lot closures until 6:00 PM, rather than just 5:00 PM, which would give them, I think, a little bit more time at the end of the day to wind down before the roads opened up and get things put away. And then closure of the downtown parking lot's southernmost alleyway, which runs east to west from Linderman Law to the pharmacy. And lastly, they wanted us, the town, to look into closing 50th Avenue West from Canadian Pizza Unlimited to Second Street West and leaving the alley between Blackwood and Canadian Pizza open. After that, we actually went and talked to the business owners in that area. They weren't particularly fond of that idea. And so we haven't been able to report back to that committee, which is why we're talking to you about it, but just to let them know that that might not be an advisable move and that we think there's still plenty of road closures in place without closing that area down to have a really good event. So really, it's just the first two items that we're looking for approval of tonight.
Open this for discussion. Counselor Kettles?
Is there any concern about, you know, going from 5:00 to 6:00 with staff or, you know, whoever's going to move away barriers or tuck things away? Is that any concern?
No.
You have questions?
I had, see, that's why I shouldn't have used the little... There was something that caught my eye in this, so I was reading it the other day. So in the original one, you're closing it from 50th Avenue West to Second Street West already.
Forty-ninth.
Forty-ninth.
Forty-ninth, where I closed on 50th.
Says from 50th Avenue West.
For the parade route.
From Second Street.
From Second Street to Fourth Street.
Okay. Never mind, I missed the "from." Hi, Paul Joyce.
I'll make the first motion.
Move by Counselor Cutler to extend the street market from 5:00 to 6:00 PM. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to extend the existing street market downtown parking lot and road closures on Saturday, August 13th, 2022, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM.
Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor? Opposed? Passed. Looking for a second motion for the downtown parking lot and alleyway. Motion by Counselor Kettles. Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to approve the road closure for the downtown parking lot southernmost alleyway, which runs east to west from Linderman Law to Pharmacy on Saturday, August 13th, 2022, from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Questions, comments? All in favor? Moving on, well, I know that they are looking for 50th Ave. Are we, we're all in agreeance that that should not go forward, counsel? Okay, perfect then. Moving on then, request for disdirection to 2022 parade attendance. Abe?
Yeah, parade season is opening up again, and historically, the town sends the float to Nanton Roundup Days, of course, our own Clarestown Fair Days, Staveley when they hold their event, which they will be having at this year, and Fort McLeod, and Pincher Creek usually as well. So that's the normal circuit for us. Just, we have a request here as well for Spock Days for Vulcan. And normally, when there's a special celebration, we also attend that one. This one is the 30th, 30 years of Spock Days, and so might consider doing that one as well. But just looking for direction on what events council would like us to prepare for this And it says parade candy for these parades usually costs about $1,250 a year. Anything extra, if you want us to attend extra, we'd have to buy some extra candy, so...
Why are you looking at me? Open it for discussion so you can say what you need to say.
Parades are awesome. I'll go to any parade I want here, I can. If we want to go to Vulcan, it's their 30th anniversary, may as well support them. And if we're having troubles with drivers, then I'll definitely drive the float.
Yeah, I'm happy to attend the Spock Days as well and anything essentially before the 16th of August.
So we'll add Spock Days to the itinerary?
You said we normally go to Nanton?
We always go to Nanton.
Right, so we got Granum, Nanton, Clarestown, Pincher Creek, Staveley.
And the last few years, we... Sorry, last few years, we do oftentimes go to Coldale.
Really?
That's a big one. And we have quite a bit gone to Bellevue as well. So it's just kind of your direction, what you'd like to see. Because either they're the ones that we either attend for sure or we sometimes attend.
Right. Do we have a driver? We don't have it. Somebody's volunteered to say, "Hey, if you need us to drive," like we usually have in the past.
We haven't approached anyone yet because we didn't know what council's direction was going to be.
We still have a float? I just want to make sure if it's...
Good question.
I know we still have it, it's for choice of words.
Are we towing down a flatbed trailer and have to put some paper on the side?
The float's ready to go is where I was going with that. Okay.
Sorry, the $1,250 budget, that covers which communities again?
So basically, that would cover all the normal ones. So anything that we like, so the only ones that would be, like, an anomaly would be Vulcan and Staveley, those two, and Staveley because they only have theirs every five years. The other, all the other ones pretty much are included in that. Except sometimes with Clarestown, if council wants lots of candy to give out, we might have to buy extra for that one.
At the bargain shop.
No, we get it, we get it from the candy store.
We had to buy it last year because we ran out.
Yeah, I'm happy to add Vulcan on there just because it is their 30th and they've sent out an invitation for it. That's one in.
Do we have a budget for Spock years?
I guess Kettles is going to be going to the Spock Days.
No, no.
He's volunteered to attend the Spock Day celebration.
We actually, one year, we actually sent our float to Lowndes, which is a long ways away, but it was their 100th, I think, anniversary, and so we did support theirs as well. So we, these do come up some once in a while.
Sweet. We decided Vulcan, is it Bellevue that we go to as well?
We have.
We have?
I think we'll do Bellevue.
Could we skip Bellevue and replace it for, like, swap it out for Vulcan? Just because that's pretty much every weekend for most of the summer. So I could see switching out Vulcan for Vulcan and Bellevue for just this year because Vulcan is celebrating their 30 years. Doing the Granum, Nanton, Coldale, Clarestown, or whatever.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion. Bump the, with the candy budget up to 1,500 for the extra, extra days, if that's okay? Can't leave a kid without a smile.
It's for the kids.
And I won't, everything's for the kids.
For the children.
Nope.
Two for me, one for you.
Everything's for the kids, and I won't even eat the candy on my way up there. Promise.
So moved by Counselor Carlson to approve the town of Clarestown's float to attend the 2022 parades as presented, with the exception of Bellevue, with a budget of up to $1,500 for candy.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? One opposed? Moving on, request for direction, shared services, economic development. Abe?
Last year, right before the municipal election, the ICF committee, a month or so before the municipal election, the ICF committee met and talked about shared, different shared services. And one of those shared services was economic development. And there was a motion at that meeting back in August that the municipalities bring back to their respective councils the topic of sharing economic development services out of Clarestown. And so council, that last council approved it. However, the timing of that, in hindsight, wasn't very good because there was the election after that. And before we were able to hear back from all the other municipalities, the election happened. And so we now have new councils, new members on that committee, and we finally met as an ICF committee to follow up on that motion and that request. A couple of weeks ago, we met, and the committee asked that we bring this back to Clarestown Council to have a talk, conversation, to see if the council was still in support of that. But essentially, the idea was that out of the Economic Development Office in Clarestown, we would be able to provide economic development services to other municipalities and have more of a regional approach to economic development. And so I'm just following some marching orders from that ICF committee and bringing this back to you for a request for direction.
Open this for discussion.
As far as I know, there's no interest.
In a shared one?
Yeah. Well, not in a shared one.
Well, not in a shared one, in us offering Brady. See, that was, that was the discussion last year, was we were going to open up to Brady, doing multiple things for Fort McLeod and Nanton. Things have changed over the last seven months, and that was my fear and our fear when we went up to the I C F meeting. We brought it up, and they said, well, before we are ready for the discussions, we better find out what Claris Home wants. And so we said we'd bring it back, and I kind of knew that was the direction we were going, but we just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page and that the economic development is still busy.
I don't think they're interested either.
Other communities?
You don't think why?
Fort McLeod isn't.
No, there was two. There was Staveley, Staveley and that were interested in it. So, and that's before we decided any more discussion, we just thought we'd see where we were at, so.
I am not in favor of sharing Brady at this time. I'd like him to focus in on our community. I think we're being disservice to loan him out. Counsel Kettles?
Well, I I think that's a fair assessment, yet I I think we should look opportunities where we can. I I'm thinking mostly around Staveley. I mean, you know, Nanton's big enough, they can stand on their own feet maybe. But but, you know, maybe there's some opportunities around with Staveley and stuff that, even if it's not a formal agreement through economic development or something, but, you know, shared initiatives, the idea of having a bit of a regional view on some of these things, I I think can only benefit all of us.
I agree with that in a sense that if there is those opportunities in Staveley, I can't imagine that Brady wouldn't be supportive in sending the right people in that direction. However, I wouldn't want it to be sort of an official on paper. He is to support them. Those, I think he's got a pretty good relationship within those. We have, that's why we have I C F is for those collaborations, but to officially loan him out, I think, would be.
Yeah, at this point, like, informally, we were very open to helping with knowledge and resources. We're, we definitely get that. Our administrations, whenever we have the chance, we're gonna, we're gonna help each other out, right? So informally, we we get that, right? Taking it to a next level right now. Again, administratively, we feel that Brady's time is best used all in Claris Home, especially given council's new strategic plan. Yeah.
Cool. So do you need a motion or anything?
Nope.
We get the regional overview from Alberta Southwest.
Right. And that's where Fort McLeod's going. Right? They're using Southwest now more and stuff. They're getting more involved, and they were very happy with the input they've been getting from their economic development. So, and we all pay into that, so they were happy with using that, and it changed, so we're good.
Yeah, perfect.
Great. No motions needed for that?
Nope.
All right. Moving on, financial report, statement of operations for March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Abe?
Yeah, just presented for your information, council, and the public's information as the income statement as of March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Any questions or comments with this? Counsel Kettles?
I guess my day to talk. Abe, on on this list, I had to do math to try to see if we're in line. I've looked at some of the others of these, and they just kind of give a percentage of the budget or something like one more column to see where we're at. So as of, you know, does does year-to-date represent, you know, thirty percent of our total or ninety percent of our total? Just on a glance, sort of having to do the math, I don't know if it'd be easy to add a a column there if that would make more sense.
Yeah, we can, I can talk to Blair about that, but that probably wouldn't be too hard to do. So I think our reporting, I think our reporting software will allow us to do that pretty easily. So.
You want someone to accept this? Statement of oper- no? Take it for information at this time. Thank you. There's no other comments regards to it? Moving on.
Sorry, we usually get a motion for for that.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
You just told me no. Sorry, Cutler's.
I'll make a motion to accept the financial statements for the end of March thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two as presented.
Thank you. Motion by Counsel Zimmer. Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to accept the consolidated statement of operations for the month end of March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two as presented.
Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor? Moving on, information brief, strategic planning report.
Yeah, this is our updates to council on the strategic plan initiatives. This presented just for your information. If you have any questions, fire away. But we will be bringing this report back to you regularly with updates. This is the main reporting mechanism on the strategic plan. If you feel this is sufficient, if you want something different, just let us know. And we can adjust that. But this is, this is how we're planning to report it. Any questions on anything?
Questions, concerns? Able to take it for information at this time? All right. Moving on, information brief, council committee reports.
Thanks, Brad.
Yeah, thank you, Brad.
You're the man.
Actually, I had to go through all of our all of our committees that we were all on to see because I was like, gosh, Brad is on a lot. He reports an awful lot. So thanks, Brad. Do you like to comment on any of them? Questions, comments? Take it for information at this time, mate?
Just Southgrove. There's a a piece in in camera talks about what Southgrove does and how it affects Claris Home. I think everyone should read it. Because four grand gets us a lot.
Are you meaning everyone on council or just and then the community as well or not at this time? Take it for information? Information brief, council resolution status. Abe?
Yeah, this is our regular report for you on the resolutions from the council meetings. Questions on anything?
Questions, comments, concerns? Counsel Schlossberger?
Community Futures Business Loan Program. Is that proceeding or?
Yes, it is. What, where is it? Okay, thank you. Yes, it is. Brady just needs to connect with, last I spoke to him, connect with
Tony.
Who's, Tony, Tony Walker. Yeah, just to kind of coordinate that, but it is proceeding.
Okay.
Any other questions? Take it for information at this time. Moving on, adoption of the information items. Moved by Counsel Carson to adopt the information as presented. Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to adopt the information items as presented.
Questions, comments? All in favor? Pass, any opposed? Moving on, we need, looking for a motion to go in camera. Motion by Counsel Carson to go in camera to discuss personnel for Section seventeen and land for Section sixteen. Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to go on camera at seven thirty-eight P M. For the following items, A, personnel for Section seventeen, B, land for Section sixteen.
All in favor? Pass, camera off at seven thirty-nine P M.
Mayor?
The camera's on? All right, motion to come out of camera? Motion by Counsel Zimmer? Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to come out of in camera at eight oh one P M.
All in favor? Looking for a motion for land for Section sixteen?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, moved by Counsel Schlossberger. Question?
To include fifty percent on the purchase price back.
Move by Counsel Schlossberger. Question?
Moved by Counselor Schlossberger to advertise a closed bid auction for lots, lots sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, two, three, and four, block one seventeen, plan eight zero one, zero seven, eight one, with a reserve bid of thirty thousand dollars per lot, conditional on the successful bidder entering into a purchase agreement with the town, which includes a development obligation and an option to require at fifty percent of the purchase price.
Any further questions or comments with this? All in favor? Motion passed. Looking for a motion to adjourn this meeting at nine oh two. Motion by Counsel Carson? Eight oh eight oh two, sorry. Thank you. Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson that this meeting adjourned at eight oh two P M.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned. Camera off.